The Board's strategic goals. We've called this a budget summary in support of the Board of Education's strategic directions. And this, that we're slides, the slides that we're going to be presenting this evening, are going to be just one part of the total picture. The Board's strategic directions, the first one is student learning, and we're going to have five slides here.
Yes.
Are we skipping over the capital outlay?
No, that one's next. That's the next one.
Wasn't in the packet that way, but that's okay.
Yes, that, this, the order this evening is a little different. I apologize for that.
Sure you're paying attention.
Yeah. The information we're going to be providing on these five slides are the five Board's strategic directions, the first one being student learning. I've identified around $7.1 million, and we've identified for this evening, three goals. I think there's actually four goals, but we're trying to bring somewhat of a summary to this process for the Board and for the public. What we're not showing up here this evening are the objectives, because in some cases there are multiple objectives for each goal. And then behind each objective, we have sometimes multiple action plans that have associated with them staffing, supplies, materials, and all that information. And so for this evening, for the broad, three-mile overview, so to speak, we're saying that for student learning, we're looking at goals of advancing all student learning, accelerating challenged learners in achievement, and increasing effective implementation of various processes which assist in improving student learning. And I told myself I wasn't going to read it, and I'm not going to read the rest of them, but this is a significant strategic direction that the Board has. And as we're moving through here, if you have questions specifically about maybe what's included or not included, I might go to the individual on staff that provide, can provide that information to the greatest ability, and that, in this particular case, it would be Dr. Benikowski.
I just want to clarify what the information you're presenting, Gary. These are initiatives over and above what we're already doing.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
In many cases, they...
Well, in terms of the additional costs, I mean, we won't be expanding programs and so forth, but these are additional dollars.
These are costs that we are not currently incurring, but in many cases, they are programs that we are, that are actively involved and are being very productive, and these costs reflect going to scale across the rest of the district.
Thank you.
And Dr. Benikowski, on the first one there, does that 7.1 include some level of foreign language for elementary?
Well, it would have, I should have brought my budget documents pages down here. We did include information for, we are making a proposal for elementary international language. It is currently in a subcommittee of professional counsel, and the only thing I'm hesitating about, I don't remember if I included the money here or under another goal, but I do believe it's under this, under number one, advancing all learners' achievement, and it does include a proposal to implement international language next year, K through six.
Okay, so bottom line, the budget proposal would have that in there somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The second strategic direction deals with the quality staff. We have a couple goals there, a projected value of $11 million to implement in totality. Hesitated whether or not to put the note there, but I think it's important for you to know that we are including in this, as a placekeeper, the fact that there is an expectation for some salary increases. We only picked the 3% not to give anyone the impression that that's a maximum or that that's a minimum, only to say that that's generally a consumer price index, and the amount that is based reflective of 3% is in that 11 million, along with the health and dental insurance benefits.
Gary, can you tell us, just for every 1% increase in salaries, ballpark figure, what does that translate?
Yeah, we're working on finalizing that.
Did I ask you a question too soon?
No, that's okay, but it's somewhere in the vicinity of 1.6 to $2 million for every 1%. Somewhere in that, that would be all classified, all staff.
Teachers, teachers and custodians?
Teachers.
Maintenance, facility, clerical support.
And not to get ahead of your proposal here, but I know one of the topics of discussion is the operating salaries, 1.9 million is currently in capital outlay. Is that included in your proposal, or that would be in addition to?
Yeah, that's it. Right now, it's in both of them. We're trying to make placekeepers so that we don't forget about that concept at the point in time we make a decision where it goes, but right now, it's in both the budget summary for the, in support of strategic directions, and also in the capital needs section.
So the ideal recommendation, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, would be to move that back into the general fund?
Yes.
Which is where it belongs?
That's where it belongs.
Okay, good.
And I believe that's going to be in level five when we get there. The third one deals with involvement in climate, some initiatives that are to bring in more contact with our community, with our parents. The fourth one talks about innovation, encouraging and promoting the climate of innovation. In many cases, the dollars are the concepts that we've included here. We've identified them, but we have not put dollars with them. Instead, we've identified the dollars in the other four categories where it makes a little more sense as to their application, but we're looking at them as innovative ideas that we wanted to make note of. And the last one, resource acquisition and allocation, and I believe that it's in this one, Mr. Churchman, that we've said the concept of operationally, it makes most sense to bring the maintenance salaries back into the operating fund, and so that 2 million is a big share of the 6.6 million you see there. And so with those ideas there, those are the five strategic directions. I put that there to keep in perspective because it adds up to $25 million. We're going to see pretty soon that we're probably not going to come anywhere close to having 25 million, and I don't want anyone to get the understanding or the perception that staff believe that it's a possibility. Our task at this point is to identify, identify needs, and bring to scale what those needs would look like. The reality is, we're not going to be able to do that, and the prioritization process is going to be very difficult, but one that we go through every year, and so we need to keep things in perspective as we move forward. The other, second part of the needs equation is the capital outlay summary of requests. Once again, we've summarized the documentation that was presented to the Board, and what we've tried to do here is break down all capital outlay, or capital expenditures, into three major categories, those for technology, I think that's, that would be obvious, service center operations, which is traditionally the maintenance, roofing, asphalt renovations, and then those business operations that provide furnishings, equipment replacements, and those kinds of tasks, of expenditures. We've divided those into priorities of one, two, and three. Priority one are those of highest priority that we believe must be implemented before the beginning of school or sometime during the school year. Priority level two, those things that would, are, we believe are beneficial, they support and align with everything that we're talking about with our strategic directions, but whether or not the funding is available, and as important as funding, is whether or not there is time to even plan for those implementations is very critical. So it's a resource not only of dollars, but also labor to implement. Three are those things that are perhaps questionable on the alignment, are questionable on, on the degree of prioritization at this point in time. Once again, keeping things in perspective, a five-mil levy provides a budget of around 14 million.
That's what our mill levy is now?
Yes, it's 4.95, roughly 5 million. It was 7 million a couple years ago. We've reduced it to, but have not changed our spending. I mean, we haven't really cut back anything, mainly because we had some cash reserves that we were working with. But a five-mil level equates to around a $14 million budget. We see that that would provide for all of priority one, so that's a good thing. When we look, though, to see how far that, or how deep that goes into priority two, we see that it doesn't go that far. And so once again, just getting a perspective of where we're at, needs versus revenue coming in. Back to the balancing tree, we've got cash balances. Now we're on the right side, the operating budget projections.
Gary, let me back you up one second on capital outlay, if I could. I just want, I didn't understand one thing on the, the schedule that had the three sections. Where it says building responsibility, it said projects that should be financially supported at the building level. Can you, I don't understand what that means.
Yes. The buildings are allocated dollars in their normal allocation based on, if they're a senior high or junior high, how many students they have, and there's a formula that we work through to provide them an allocation to work with for making decisions internally about the curriculum resources that they provide, library, media, books, how many they buy, field trips, athletics, everything.
Those are capital outlay funds?
Well, no, those are, those would be general operating, operating funds. In that, though, we also provide them a capital outlay fund that they can replace VCRs that break down, buy a new CD player, those kinds of things. And many times, there is some misalignment between the requests that come from the buildings and, and the anticipation of maybe what the district provides for them and what the district believes that they should provide for themselves. And so sometimes, we just need to work on that clarification with them. We wanted to identify in this chart everything that was requested, but some of those things, we believe that, and we talk with the buildings about the fact that that's probably something they need to prioritize from year to year for their purchase.
But when you say financially supported at the building level, does that mean they, they do, they raise money themselves?
Not necessarily raised, but out of the money that they receive.
Out of their allocation.
Out of their allocation, they are supposed to prioritize that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Hope we don't get tired of this graph. Okay, so now we're on the right side of the operating budget projections. This one really scares me, these next two charts, because normally, we don't provide this information until the end of June. We simply cannot put a lot of value in this, other than the fact that the information is how we're going to be looking at it, and it's only worth the paper that it's printed on right now, and so please take everything that you see with a grain of salt. It's the best we have at this time, but as we know, that there's a lot of unknowns. When we look at the operating budget, this in itself could be a whole, long evening discussion, because we're talking about an operating fund that is based on, on projection of enrollment for next year, it's based on projections for how many bilingual students we think we're going to have, it's based on, this, this right model right here is based on the last House bill that provides for a $50 increase in the base state aid per pupil. It provides for an increase in at-risk. It provides for an opportunity to access 30% for the LOB instead of 29%, which is the current law. And so all of those things were rolled into this particular projection, and I think that what we need to note is that where last year, well, I need to get out of that, we're still this year. This year, this year's budget had a 20, come on your mouse, $20.8 million increase over the prior year. We're looking right now, according to the last House bill, and many of the House bills, many of the bills that have been looked at so far have been three-year plans, and while they fluctuate somewhat, all of them are probably going to provide an increased revenue next year of somewhere between 9 and 12 million. The only way we're going to see something as significant of last year is if they come up with a plan that puts all of those three years into one, and then we might see something like that. Other than that, our current projections are, we're looking at somewhere in the vicinity of, right, this projection, around $11 million increase.
How much of that is attributed to growth?
I have that broken down. It's probably a large portion of it, yes. I'm saying maybe 5 million of that.
Half of it?
Yes.
Is for growth?
A 5 million, okay. Good, yes. Looking at it from the other side, from the House plan, it said that our increase would be about 5 million, so it'd probably be about 6 million that is going to come from growth. Okay?
That's just to pay for what's, the students that are going to be here.
Exactly.
So we have 4 million extra, I guess you could say.
And like Dr. All said, we know those students are coming, and so we're already planning for the hiring process to get that rolling.
And how much of that is for at-risk? Of that 10 million, how much would be for at-risk?
As I recall from the House plan, about a million, maybe a little over a million was tied up in special education improvements, and that was enacted in the prior year and is going up to 92% of excess costs this year. The increase in the at-risk would be, depending on the plan, around 650,000, maybe, maybe a million under some plans, depending on a number of variables there. The, we won't get the high-density at-risk that's also a part of that.
I'm sorry, what was the high-risk number, Gary? I was thinking about something else.
I'm thinking it's around an additional 650,000, but I'll have, I'll have to look at, I may have it here, and I can have it for you in a minute.
So the, the point I'm trying to make is, so 6 million is for growth, another million, million and a half is for special add-in at-risk, leaves us a million and a half, maybe two.
Gary, how much of that is sales tax?
To work with.
Sales tax essentially is not going to change for next year.
Right.
The current formula, so...
It's in this number?
Well, actually, sales tax not, is not even in this number. It's a grant, it's in a different fund.
Oh, it's a, yeah, okay, good.
But it's helping to support programs that, when the sales tax is gone, are going to have to come from this number.
Right, I guess my point is, if, if this has some truth to it, there's about $11 million there. Are we talking about another $5 million coming from another fund to actually make that 15 million?
It's not new money.
No, it's not new, that's not new money, that's, along your line of thought, if you look at this 188 million, if that's our expenditure, then our total expenditure would be 188.5, plus five, but that wouldn't add to the increase for next year. That would only add to the total budget authority.
So could one look at this from the perspective that if you would subtract out the sales tax, which fortunately, we don't have to, then what would be the total increase of the budget if these projections were true?
Okay. If these projections are true and the sales tax were gone, then of that 10.8, immediately, 5 million of that would be absorbed in current costs that we would either have to get rid of or make adjustments otherwise. In other words, our increase next year, instead of being 10.8, would be 5.8.
That's, that's my point.
Does that make sense? Is that okay?
In the 188, now, is that budgeted any kind of salary increase for staff?
Yes.
Three?
Well, no, no, this is the, this, we're on, we're on the revenue side now.
We're on the revenue side.
Yeah.
All right, so, okay, we're, I got you.
We're not talking about what we'll spend on...
Ultimately, we have to balance our expenditures to that number.
Out of that number, right. And when we talked about it a while ago, that was around 25 million we identified.
So in essence, with that, all right.
It's tough, yeah.
Real tough.
Okay. The next slide deals with levies, and as we look at the levies over the last three years, we see that there was a five-mil increase two years ago. The Board maintained stability with lowering by a mil last year. That came at, essentially, the bond and interest went down by almost three mils, which, which helped that situation. Looking at next year, if we look at all of the projections on what the budget could be for next year, if we look at the pressures for that to increase, going from 27 to 30% LOB, which was built into that projected number, looking, though, also at the fact that BODA this next year is going to go down, somewhere from the vicinity of the utilization of 14 million this year to 11 million next year, and that's not by any other reason than that's all that we have authority for, and that's going to continue to go down over the next couple of years. There is the potential for having a mil levy this next year that is very stable to what we have right now.
The BODA has a chance of going back up with additional facilities that are potentially built, correct? So Elementary School Number 32 will then work to raise that BODA up?
The only concern I have there, Mr. Churchman, is by that point in time, the other things that are going off, the high school almost totally, the junior high and the two elementaries, are almost going to negate...
Obsolety.
Yeah, if we're only adding an elementary, that's going to almost negate that.
Yeah, okay, good point, thank you.
So looking at everything put together, we have one more thing to look at, and that is the opportunities for reserve assistance. And when we have talked about that, what we're looking here is an opportunity to tap in to some of those resources that we've talked about earlier this evening. And, and in this perspective, we simply have three things. Number one, the reserves in the operating and dependent funds, which, depending upon what we, which direction we go, that's right, that could be around 5.6 million, and the Johnson County Economic Grant of 1.7 million. Now, the reason I include that one here is because what we're saying is that we might want to use those dollars in ways that are different from before, but in so doing, we would be taking away 1.7 million of current opportunities that we're providing, and so that's all part of the balancing of the budget equation.
That's the one-third you mentioned in your memo?
That's, yes, that's the one-third. Maintenance salaries, I put it down here as a placeholder, 1.9 million, because in reality, it, I guess we can say that it frees up some dollars for deferred maintenance, which it really does, but if we do that, then we're going to have to find $2 million out of our operating side.
Takes it out of the classroom.
It takes it out of the classroom. So, and that's, that's exactly correct. So we're going to have to weigh that. You know, where do we want to go? Realistically, and I've, and I've stated this, and I believe it, it needs to belong in the operating fund because it's an, it's an operation cost, and we moved it out for good reasons in the past, and that is because if we would not have moved it out, we would have to had reduced services in the classroom.
That's when we, that was a, a decision that the Board made three or four years ago, when we were, we were faced with some very difficult financial issues, and that was a point in time that we made that decision, put it in capital outlay to free up 2 million, probably, well, at that time, it wasn't that much, but I think it was a million and a half, if my memory serves me correctly, for classroom support. So, and again, well, we aren't going to make a decision on that tonight, so.
Okay. So in conclusion, moving forward, from staff's perspective, I think we need to continue to provide education awareness to you and the public as far as what opportunities for additional information you might want in May and June for additional analysis and clarity. Capital outlay, I think we do need to say that we need, that we're moving forward on projects on, for priority ones, we need to, or otherwise, they're, they're simply not going to even come close to being implemented for beginning of the year or even next year. And, and as those come forward, though, the Board will have an opportunity to approve those, and so, I mean, like right now, I know that Ms. Lyon is working on a large computer purchase, and that will be coming before you in probably next month. As far as the Board is concerned, we need to continue to gain awareness of all the factors, and please call, please, let's have an opportunity to meet, because there's an awful lot of information with other questions that could be with the information that was provided. I did put in there, as far as guidance on the mil levy, we need to start thinking about that, because we need to understand that we could totally eliminate capital outlay and save five, five mils. We could totally throw away BODA and save another eight mils. Somewhere between lowering the mil levy 13 mils and maintaining a stability is something that you need to help start providing as guidance, because there are so many scenarios that can be built around what your feelings are there, that I'm, I don't want us to get into, it's going to be late anyhow making decisions, and if we don't have some feel for planning as we're going into it, it's going to make the scenarios that we have to look at so vast that it might almost immobilize us. So we need to be thinking about what, what our goals are there in that area.
Just a clarification there, if you were to throw BODA out, your LOB is going to go down as well, correct?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Churchman, I didn't hear that.
If you throw the, I mean, under the...
That's true.
...far-reaching scenario here, if you were to take BODA and eliminate it, then you would be obligated to reduce your LOB, because that's got to be maximized in order to get BODA funds.
Well, actually, it's, it's the other way around. We need to maximize the LOB to get the BODA, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. One thing I just do want to put in perspective, I think there's a lot of good things going on here. This is a tremendous report. Obviously, we know our needs far exceed probably what we'll have resources for, but the last two years, we've received an increase of $42 million. I think that's a positive, and I think we need to keep a focus on that as things become more focused here over the next several months.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? I would just echo what Mr. Churchman said, excellent report, a lot of great work by staff, by some Board members, by Superintendent. I think, as somebody said earlier, we are moving toward some mutual understandings in terms of being on the same page and understanding the complexity of school finance, which I think is very important. Obviously, there will be independent, individual decisions and philosophies and beliefs in terms of where we should go with mil levy and reserves and things like that, but I feel more comfortable because we'll be doing that with, for the most part, the same knowledge base, and I think that's important as we move forward on that. Okay, consent agenda. Following agenda items represent matters that the Board may approve without detailed discussion. Any item on the consent agenda may be removed for a separate discussion as an action item upon request by the Superintendent or any Board members. The Board has received supporting information on all items prior to action in the consent agenda. Any questions, comments, items you'd like to pull off the agenda, clarifications on items?
I'd like, what? Page B17, the vote, the bid?
B17.
Except the roof screening cost for Harmony. Once again, I just, because I do business with these people, I would like that pulled off so I can excuse myself from that vote.
B17, all right?
Actually, G8 would be, you're saying the page number?
Page B17, yeah.
Item G8. Any other items?
Dr. Drummond, I'd like to talk about F1, F2, F7, F10, G2, G4, G9, and that's it.
Okay, you don't want those removed, you just want clarification before you vote, is that?
Well, there's two that I may offer up to have removed.
Okay.
Why don't we pull those down, Jim, and then we'll talk about the others?
The two that I would like to potentially have removed, one for sure is F10.
F10.
And based on some discussion with the Board, potentially F7.
Okay. Okay, questions you might have on the others? Maybe take the other first and then come back to those?
Sure, absolutely. And most of my questions will be brief. On F1, on the banking agreement, I just would like to understand, that expired in 2005, is that on a year-to-year renewal?
The original agreement called for two one-year renewals. This is the final one-year renewal.
And so then, is it the intent that we would competitively bid that arrangement again at the culmination of that?
Next spring.
Okay, very good.
I have a question in regard to that. What was the term of the original banking agreement?
The term was three years with two one-year renewals.
And so this represents the second or first one-year renewal?
The second renewal. This is the fifth year. We are going into the fifth year.
Thank you.
Audit services.
F2, just have another question about Statement 45. As we begin our budget planning, I'm curious, is that going to require us to put a, set aside of funding in our budget, or is that not the case?
That's not our understanding at this time, no.
Okay, and we'll be obligated to report on that this year, is that correct?
No.
Or is it 2007?
2007 audit, yes.
Very good, thank you. Do we want to skip F7 and F10, or should I come back to those two?
If you can come back to those two.
Okay, on G2, the question I have is, do we have the opportunity to go back to the bidders and ask them if their price would change if we gave them a cumulative award, much the same as we've done with, I believe, the painting?
Very well might. We've never bid it that way, because most of the roofing we need, we need in such a short time that most roofing companies do not have hundreds of people they can put on the roofs, and that's the reason we cannot get all the roofing done we would like, generally speaking, because of the size and the shortness of the projects that we were requesting. That's the reason we put them out as singled, so we can get the best bid and get them done.
I'd offer up for Board's consideration, if the Board so chooses to approve the recommendations that you've made here tonight, in lieu of, before we notify those people of quickly asking that question to see if we'd be able to get some volume discount from them.
If we did, we'd have to come back to the Board. We would probably not be able to roof this summer. They would have to bring up too fast if we have to come back to Board in another month, but we can sure ask them.
But it's certainly something we can look at moving forward, try to get some volume discounts where it's feasible and possible.
Are you talking about right now, or like in the next cycle of roofing? I'm trying to help Jim understand this.
Yeah, it was my desire to be able to ask that question now. I would have to defer to Mr. Hilton's expertise on timing. I guess at the very least, I would like to have that question asked on future bids.
We can check in, okay, go ahead, Jim.
We can do that very easily, because then I'll have at least six months to get moving on it, but right now, we're sort of pressed, but yes, for the next one, we can set it up that way with no problems.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Just a comment on the discount rate for the transportation pay riders. I think that's outstanding work on... that's outstanding work on part of the staff. And look forward to any recommendations on the student curriculum fees as well. On the epoxy flooring, G-4, I've seen a number of examples out in our schools where we've done this. I think it's outstanding. My recollection was at Desco, there was some concerns with the cleanliness, or the ability to clean the floor, the durability of it. Is that a floor we have at California Trail, or is my memory failing me there?
We have it both at California Trail and Prairie Trail, the same year. And then we've installed a different version of it at Ravenwood.
Okay.
And so far, the maintenance issues have not, we really haven't had maintenance issues. That was a concern when we first installed it, but we don't seem to be having those.
So, when we put these floors in, is it a correct assumption, it's a cost savings to the district in the long term?
In the long term, in the corporate view, you know, the big-picture view, it's a savings to the district. First cost, it's much higher than what we've been putting in the past, but it's far less maintenance. So, in the long run, it lasts longer than the other materials we use and requires little or no maintenance, as compared to the tile floors, less first cost, much, much higher maintenance cost, and a far shorter time before the floor began to lose its appearance. You know, some of the tile floors have appearance issues after a while. So, in the corporate, big-picture view, yes, it's a savings to the district. First cost, it's more.
Okay, thank you. I would just ask that we just touch base with California Trail and make sure that their issues have been mitigated. I know that was a concern that they brought up, on the cleanability of the floor being much more difficult than what they had expected.
I will certainly have somebody checking that.
Okay, good. The, I'm going to talk now about G-8, the roof screening. I'm just curious as to, DLR left that out of the specifications, as to what their reasoning for was. I'm sure it was an error, but...
It was just an error. It was a miscommunication between they and the engineer. I, you know, it was, it's unfortunate that it happened. I believe it's one of those things, you know, it's a new architect to us, his first project that worked on for us. I guess we have to look at there somewhat of a learning curve as those things happen. But yes, it was just left out.
Okay. On G-9, the wireless pilot installation, I'm just curious as to, a couple of questions, why Manchester Park?
Manchester Park was one of the buildings that was built. This is their second year of operation. And we have the new foundation of wireless laptops there, so they have a higher volume of laptops there. Very heavy usage going on there. And that was one of the buildings that we had some other wireless access points in the building that we were not satisfied with their performance. So, we know that we can footprint that building, cover that building with this solution, and compare this with the previous solution in the entire building.
Okay, thank you. And on Ravenwood, I thought Ravenwood was already wireless.
Ravenwood is exactly the same as Manchester Park. That, the solution that we had at Manchester Park, we went in with at Ravenwood. And one of the, one of the reasons that we've picked this vendor is that we have found that we are able to see those wireless access points through their enterprise solution, manage them remotely. And that's going to help us as we move forward to use the existing devices that we have, as well as the new devices that we're putting in.
Yeah, I think the wireless access is a great thing to do, so I fully support that. I'm curious, though, Ravenwood and Clearwater Creek, why are those priorities over the junior highs?
Because they have the new foundation of laptops there, so they have more accessibility to wireless devices in those buildings.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Rita. And I think then that goes back to
F-7?
F-7 and F-10.
Before we go to that, could I ask one other question, too?
Sure.
And that has to do with accounting. I noticed that in our letters that F referenced from the accounting firm, it says, because of the agreed-upon procedures listed below, do not constitute an examination, we will not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the internal controls. In addition, we have no obligation to perform any procedures beyond those listed below. I guess my question is, do we have a backup procedure for looking at some specifics, particularly the random sampling of the receipts, receipt journals, cash disbursements of each school? Yeah.
I think I know what you asked, but we do have all the schools audited for their activity funds. Is that what you're thinking of? They look through all of the receipts, all of the expenditures with the whole district, and they do a sampling.
Okay. And basically, we do, by doing the sampling, they're saying it's not really an examination, and it's not talking about effectiveness of internal controls. The reason I'm asking this is just that backup security that we have because of concerns that may exist, you know?
It's just a standard audit. We don't specifically go into an audit of internal controls. If we did that, it would be a different audit with additional costs. But this would meet all of the qualifications to make sure the district is managing and taking safety precautions for all the funds that they have and use.
Okay, that's basically what I'm asking.
Linda, if I may, what an auditor does is, they're going to look at internal controls, and they're going to sample some things for the purpose of whether or not they can express the opinion on the statements. They're just putting a disclaimer in here that that's not an audit of the internal controls, which would be a separate engagement if we chose to do that.
Okay.
Which would cost a lot of money, and
Okay.
would be a separate engagement.
Okay.
But it is a standard disclaimer.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's Churchman.
F-7 on the KASB dues. I'm curious as to why we're paying incrementally for legal assistance.
Dr. Roll.
I'm sorry, again, I didn't hear the question.
I'm curious about the $1,100 for legal assistance.
One of the things that KSB does is has a team of attorneys that are available, that have really specialized knowledge of situations in Kansas. We use those sometimes on specific questions. We get that service free then, and does not involve Mr. Norris in that process. So, sometimes we need a question on a day-to-day operation, or something that's happened at the school, or student-related, that, you know, I've called them this year personally when I was deputy superintendent, I was calling more often. And I'd say, here's what I think the issue is related to freedom of expression in schools, for example. And I just want to make sure, are there any additional new changes in case studies in Kansas, or anything there that we need to be aware of? Are there any other suits out there? They're going to give me that feedback, and then I'm going to be able to take action on it. Most of the time when we're calling them, sometimes we use it as a, sort of triangulating the data. We can ask the question of Scott, we can call them and see what they think. And then, if we still feel like we need to go to a higher or more specific level, then we would check out with Mike Norris. So, that's how we use the service.
Very good, thank you. F-10, I guess I'd like to get an understanding as to why we should backtrack and pay an incremental $13,000 for what we previously approved for the Warwick Benefit District.
There are two ways, this is my understanding of benefit districts, and I certainly don't claim to be an expert on benefit districts. But from my understanding of benefit districts, there are two ways to allocate assessment of the proposed cost. One is based upon lineal footage. Primarily, benefit districts are formed for streets or sewers, so that you can have a measurement of frontage on the road. And that is one way to allocate. The other way to allocate it is based on the acreage or the square footage that benefits from the improvement. The original benefit district that we approved last month was based on allocating that upon the lineal footage along the road. The other member of the other participant in the benefit district asked that it be allocated differently, that it be based upon square footage. That's so that he can then pass that assessment along with the lots when he sells the lots. If the assessment is based upon just the lots that abut the street, then he has to go through some mathematical problems to then allocate that to all of the homeowners in his subdivision. When it's based upon acreage or square footage, then he can just add that on to the cost of buying a lot in the subdivision. So, a part of the problem was, is that maybe we were premature in bringing the benefit district to the school board for approval in March. We were trying to move it along, so we could have the street in time for the school to open. In hindsight, that was probably the problem. But had it been presented in this format to us, we would have still submitted to the school board in this format for approval.
Mr. Thomas, and that party, however, was a part of that document that was brought forth to the board, is that correct?
He had not signed the document yet. He signed the document at closing a week ago Monday.
Okay. And in all due respect, it'd be my request that we pull that for a separate vote, and it'd be my recommendation that we don't disadvantage the school district by $13,000.
Mr. Churchman, if I may, page C-59, the short answer to your question is, we're 24 percent of this, and he's 76. We really don't have any control over this. If we don't do it, we don't get the street, unless we want to pay for the street ourselves.
But my understanding was, he's already signed the document, is that correct?
He has signed the version of the document that we've presented tonight.
And to Mr. Gilmore's point, if we go back to him with the position that we want to retain our previous position, what would you expect the scenario to be?
We can't go back to him. Benefit districts are formed by the city. So, this is a document that is presented by the city, and the benefit district is controlled by the city of Alata. They just assess the value of the improvements across to the people who are members of the benefit district. So, we, so this was not a negotiation between us and the other party in the benefit district. This is a negotiation between us and the city of Alata. If we go back to the city of Alata, I don't know what the answer would be.
Well...
But you're absolutely right. You know, they, you know, they're the ones in control of the benefit district, they being the city, not the other party or ourselves that are members of this.
Let's backtrack a little bit.
Certainly.
The city has to be involved in the benefit district, what the petitioners are, us and the property owner
They are.
that we bought from. So, we are going to the city, saying, we want this improvement, spread it out over the cost of our respective lands, here's how we want to do it. I think for the reasons this gentleman has stated to our staff, he found a better way to allocate his costs. Fortunately, it costs us more money. But my background with some of these benefit districts is, we're in the minority here. And if we want the benefit, we're going to have to agree to what the district looks like. And it looks like this now, compared to what we thought it looked like a month ago. Otherwise, we're going to be, it won't, the benefit district won't be formed, and we'll have to pay for, well, you can't pay for half a street. You can't put in half a street. If we want the street there for the schools, and we've got crossways with the property owner, we'd be putting in the street ourselves, which we don't want to do. It's a lot more than $200,000. So, I hear what you're saying, Jim. I think we're stuck, is what I'm, and if we had been presented this back last month, without knowing there was another way to do it, we'd have probably approved it that way. Am I making sense? We're not really in control here.
Yeah, you are making sense. And all due respect, you're making tremendous sense. Are we truly stuck here?
I can weigh in just a little bit. I'm not as knowledgeable about this as Mr. Gilmore and Mr. Churchman. But I know that this benefit district had some difficulties. It's a city was turned down by the planning commission, and simply because of, I don't know all the technicalities of that. And the city council approved the benefit district against city policy. I think they made an exception for this. And if we want the school, we need the benefit district. And if we take this back, Mr. Churchman, we won't be building the school there.
Is that a true statement?
I can't speak for the city of Alata. I work for the USD 233.
Would we have to take...
I don't know what the city's response would be. If we, if we show up without signing the benefit district application, obviously, there won't be a benefit district. You know, at some point
Would they have to go back to planning?
At some point, our zoning and plat were based upon there being a street in front of that property. So, I mean, I don't know. I'll be frankly, I can't speak for the city of Alata. They've always been very cooperative. I don't think they're going to let us open a school on a dirt road. So, I mean, I really think that it does present some real issues with our zoning and our plating that have already been approved, contingent upon there being a benefit district.
Well, in order for us to go forward with our plans, and our adjoining property owner to go forward with his plans, there must be a street. There must be a street. Whether it's done in a benefit district or done otherwise, there has to be a street. So, none of us can move forward without a street.
That's true.
If you can't develop lots, we can't build our school. So, if we're going to play
And I would tell you, without speaking for him, the street abuts phase two and phase three of his development, not phase one.
Not phase one, so he can move forward with phase one.
So, he could move forward to phase one without the street. We couldn't move forward with the school without the street.
Yeah. Let me restate what I said, that we would not be able to build a school that would open in 2008, is that our projected goal?
2007.
2007. We would...
Run a short timeframe.
Yeah, would probably would be the next year, because if we went back through the planning process with this again, and put it at peril, we're looking at another 60 days minimum.
Well, we could be looking at more costs, too, as time goes on. So, I hear you, Mr. Churchman. I don't, as much as I don't like to spend $13,000 more, I don't think there's much we can do about it at this point.
Yeah, good. I appreciate your comments.
I appreciate yours as well.
Okay, any other items, thoughts, comments about things, as I understand it? I could stand to be corrected here. Mr. Poland would like to pull off item G-18 for a separate vote. Mr. Churchman would like to pull off
I think it's G-8.
G-8, G-8. I'm sorry, G-8. Stand corrected. Mr. Churchman, is there an item that you'd like to pull off?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to pull off item F-4. So, F-4, transportation variances. So, given, Ms. Carpenter, do you understand?
I think I do.
Okay, G-8 and F-4.
I would move the approval, Mr. President, of the consent agenda. Less items, F-4 and G-8, will be approved as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Gilmore, a second by Mr. Parker, to approve the consent agenda, minus G-8 and F-4. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none?
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. We need to have a motion to move forward on item G-8.
I would move for approval of, oh, Mr. Poland, wait for Mr. Poland.
This won't take long, Mike, don't go forward.
Mr. President, I would move for approval of item G-8 on the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Parker to move forward on item G-8. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ashley. Any further discussion? Ms. Carpenter?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond, send Mr. Poland back in here. We need his vote. For the clerk, please note for the record that Dr. Drummond has left the meeting. And we're now on to item F-4, transportation variances. We'll entertain a motion for approval unless there's questions.
Mr. Gilmore, I would move for approval of the transportation variances as per the attached for the 2006-7 school year.
Second, third?
It's been moved by Mr. Parker, seconded by Mr. Churchman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a rookie at this stuff. Thank you. Mrs. Carpenter?
Poland?
Getting late.
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All in favor of asking Mr. Drummond to come back, say aye. It was unanimous, Bob. We wanted you to come back.
Yeah, don't you think?
Yeah.
I didn't pull it up to see the...
Okay, thank you. Moving forward. Let me find where we are.
Item 9.
Action items.
The item that we were supposed to be on at 7:50.
Well, there was a time switch this past weekend.
Oh, okay, yeah.
This doesn't reflect that, so. Okay, Mr. Deener, are you here? Yes. Health, dental, and vision rates for 2006 and '07?
Yes.
Yes, we're very pleased to present, from the professional council, came to agreement on a recommendation for the health and dental rates for the next year. As a general rule, it was a 4.3 percent increase overall in the health and dental. Dental part of that was reflecting no increase. The vision part was a very, very small percentage, of which the board does not participate in any of those costs, so really, that hasn't been historically an issue of, that the board has dealt with. The large component of the plan for this next year is a wellness component, of which we're very excited about. That component is, was an offer to the district to participate in a pilot program by Blue Cross, in which they would provide additional services with, associated with wellness. And if the board would like to have some more information, we have some people that can talk about that this evening. I'm not exactly sure what your level of further information on that is for this evening. The differential on that is around $300,000, and that is being asked for by Blue Cross Blue Shield, to show that there is an incentive and support by the district to provide that kind of opportunities for our employees. It's also an incentive on the employee to do something for that, and that is to be able to have their rate actually be reduced by $10 per month. Then they are being asked to participate in a survey that will provide information that will be able to direct that wellness program to be able to maximize its effectiveness. And so putting all that together, essentially, the board would be approving a rate structure, which is identified in the documentation. That rate structure, if an employee were to participate in the wellness portion of that, would show a $0 increase for many of our employees who are at the individual level, and a minimal level of increase of anywhere from $0 to $14 for those who had family plans, or family spouse, and those kinds of things. So again, we're very pleased to be able to offer this program, not only because of a less of an increase than what has historical been true in the health area, but also the opportunity to participate in the wellness program that Blue Cross is offering us. Give me questions?
Mr. Deener, the wellness program, the $301,000, is that just incremental cost to Blue Cross that they're charging us for that? I'm just a little confused by that cost.
Yeah, it's confusing. Regardless of whether or not the district participates in the wellness program, the premiums that have been set for our rate structure are fixed, and they represent a 4.3 percent increase. So how that four, how that increase is going to be paid between the district and the employees is immaterial of whether or not we participate in the wellness program. That's already been determined, because it's been determined on how the wellness program in the past, and how our claims have occurred in the past. The wellness program is something moving forward, and what they're simply saying is that if we want to participate in that, and receive the services of that, then there must be an incentive program. And that incentive program is designed to provide a $10 decrease per month in the employee's part of that, the participation in the cost. That $10 has to be picked up from somewhere, and that's the district.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Pollan?
Because I was gone last week, I'm not as prepared as I would like to be. Just give me a brief synopsis of what the wellness program is.
Excellent, we've got just the person to talk.
Good.
Dr. Lloyd or Larry, who's going to?
The wellness initiative, the additional wellness initiative, is actually a health and productivity management initiative called a Healthier You. It is through the Blue Cross Blue Shield program. The benchmark is the health risk appraisal. If an employee voluntarily takes the health risk appraisal upon online enrollment in the Section 125 benefits, it's a confidential, Blue Cross Blue Shield health risk appraisal. If they do take that, then they automatically receive a differential of $10 less on their premiums. From that health risk appraisal, the information then goes to the, through Blue Cross Blue Shield, goes to the University of Michigan, which is the, probably the flagship for health and wellness initiatives in the entire United States. They analyze that data and send that data back to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and from that data, they are able to, well, once you take the health risk appraisal, you individually get a health risk score, and suggestions on how to maximize the programs offered within the district, within the wellness program, in order to lower your health risk and to improve your productivity, to improve your individual wellness. And then the data from the University of Michigan is sent back to Blue Cross Blue Shield and to the district. So our wellness department, in juncture with the Blue Cross Blue Shield company, are able to target 20 percent of our population in need of different health and wellness initiatives, different classes, different online or telephone counseling programs, in order to address potential chronic illnesses and those kinds of things. And so essentially, the step one is the health risk appraisal, then that information is, from that, is given back to the individual employee, it's confidential, and that confidential information that is analyzed by the University of Michigan department, and that analysis is sent back to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and then they are able to target programs into our district to address some of those health risk issues.
What responsibility is there on the employee for the $10 a month that the school district would do it, and what has been Blue Cross's, you know, data showing that we get back for that investment?
Right, that's an excellent question. Typically, on wellness programs that are not as targeted as a health and productivity management program, the return on investment for each dollar invested, there's a $3 return. It is anticipated, the data that I've looked at, on the low end, it's for each dollar we invest in health and productivity management, there's a $6 return. And in some companies, they have seen as high as a $19 return for each dollar invested.
Once again, what is the responsibility of the employee?
To take the health risk appraisal.
Beyond that?
Beyond that, they are encouraged to, through their health risk appraisal score, to take individual responsibility toward improving their health risk. Also, the classes, it's more of a voluntary situation, the classes are offered to them, any kind of wellness class. Also, the telephonic counseling, they are contacted by Blue Cross Blue Shield, trained counselors, in order to advise them on certain classes that could lower their health risk, or different kinds of programs within the Blue Cross Blue Shield program that could lower their health risk, or different classes that we currently offer in wellness in this district. It's nothing, there is nothing mandated, but in our subcommittee of professional council that's looking at these issues, that is for discussion in phase two, at additional incentives for taking, if you participate in a program, to help lower your risk. So we're looking at it from a health and productivity management incentive program for phase two.
Thank you.
What percent of our employees take advantage of that?
Pardon me?
What percent of our employees take advantage of the-
Of a wellness program currently? Our health wellness manager is not here tonight, so about 1,000 employees currently.
Okay.
This, the advantage of having the health risk appraisal coincide with online benefits is everyone who signs up for benefits has the opportunity to take that health risk appraisal.
And that has been offered over how many years? I know that you see that percent growing each year.
Since 1999.
Okay.
Every two years, there has been a health risk appraisal that's been very voluntary in terms of, there was no incentive attached to that.
Okay.
And so I think the most recent figures was around 800 employees in the district to take the last health risk appraisal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So with the current usage, this $300,000 would be probably only $75,000, if only a fourth of our, or 20 percent of our employees are participating. Because this is, this $300,000 you have here is if 100 percent.
Yes.
Okay.
Participating, I see what you're saying, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Mr. Swatz, I know it's getting late, but I just have to comment on this, and just congratulate professional council, and all of our teachers and staff. Because when you look at this industry-wide, and for us to have an 81 percent loss ratio in the group is incredible. So when we talk about, you know, is the wellness program working, it certainly is, because over the last four or five years, our loss ratio, we know our rates have increased 10, averaged 10 percent, and we thought that was pretty good, but the industry, you know, industry, when you look, it's 13, 15 percent increases in health insurance, and this year, we're looking at 4.3 percent. So it's working. It's working, it's working. And if we could line up all 4,000 employees up here at our honor ceremony, it would be great, because that's what's making this happen. And obviously, the teachers benefit, the staff benefits, because they have lower premiums, and the school district and the taxpayers benefit, because we have lower premiums. And so I'm all supportive of the Healthier You, and granted, we may only have 1,000, but next year, if we have 1,200, and if the next year, we have 1,400, and if we keep gaining momentum in this, that number is just going to continue to get better. So I certainly congratulate the teachers and our staff and professional council for these kinds of numbers, because it's something that we miss as a community, but it's so significant to us. It's so significant to us, so, plus it means the teachers in the classroom, rather than on sickly.
I have one quick question, and it's probably not tied to this, and yet I think there's some relevance to that. And I know that the State Department has looked at us doing, looking at a wellness initiative for our kids, and looking at nutrition. At what point do we tie that in, or are we doing enough, as far as, you know, we're looking at our employees, who are now at the ages that they are, but I think you look back a little bit, and I don't know if that's something that, you know, if that's something that we want to look at, but I know there's an impact on what's happening to our young people, our children, from little on, when we talk about obesity, and we talk about the health risks that are going to come in the future. So I know this has nothing to do with Blue Cross Blue Shield right now, but I guess the question I'm asking is, at some point, do we ask about the initiative that's there for even our young people?
Mrs. Wilhelm, the Nutrition and Wellness Council gets about 30 minutes in May to present the brand-new, spanking, awesome, incredibly good Nutrition and Wellness Council policy.
And I will then not ask another question, I'm going to listen for May.
Because we are going to bow you away in May.
Sorry, thank you, I appreciate that.
Probably in summary, I would say that this really is an initiative to get out in front of costs, rather than being reactive to costs. We want to be as proactive as possible, so that we can, rather than saying, okay, how are we going to change co-pays now that we're, we've seen what the rates are going to be for next year, getting out in front of this, down 10 years down the road, that we're not faced with 80 percent, 80 percent of our compensation's going to be in benefits.
Good.
Mr. Presidents, with honor, that I would like to recommend that the board approve the health, dental, and vision rates as per attachments.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Parker to approve the recommendation of approving health, dental, and vision rates. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollan. Any further discussion? I think the only people may be concerned about our good progress will be the people who have to fund Social Security, because we're just going to live longer because of this. Ms. Carpenter?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes. Next item is to set a special date and time for a special meeting. Our agenda will be, at least if you think this will all be on the agenda, it'll be self-evaluation. There may be other things that slip in there, as they sometimes do, but the date suggested to us, after the fine work by Mrs. Carpenter, and 1,500 emails to each one of us, looks like May 24th at 6 o'clock, right here. Is that an issue with anybody at this point? Everybody can make it?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Gilmore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Churchman, do we have a special meeting Wednesday, May 24th at 6 o'clock at the Education Center? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes. Next page, we have informational items. These are future action items. Electronic scoreboard, I'm scoreboard, electronic board software solution, technology, curriculum textbook, instructional material, student trips. We can pull any or all those off and talk about them if you wish to. Again, these will be future action items. If you need more information now, staff is prepared to provide that.
Dr. All?
Yes.
I'd just like to request that before the school year adjourns, that we bring these young students from Heatherstone, who are participating in this Explore Vision team, you know, they're going on this trip, and it's, and there's no district expense, no billing expense, and no parent-student expense.
Okay.
And that's probably a first. And somebody did a lot of work with Toshiba, and I'd like to, I think we ought to honor those students on that.
We can do that.
Good suggestion.
I will mention also, next month, in May, we're planning to host a reception prior to the board meeting for all our commended scholars, our semifinalists and finalists for national merit and semifinalists. We've not done the whole group before, but these are our kids across all four high schools, so May's going to be, I think, a good month to do some celebration of some student pieces, and to have the elementary piece here, it'll be great, too.
Okay, any further discussion on future action items? If not, we'll move to information items. These are written reports that you have been provided on a variety of topics. Parent-teacher conference report, which of course is excellent, again. Aletha South 21st Century Technology Focus Program was a wonderful report. And then calendar of events, you just might look at that real quick. There's several things that begin to pile up at the end of the year. I'd pull out just a couple of them to remind you. The KASB Spring Regional on the 24th. Of course, the Rising Star, can't skip that, on the 12th. You saw some of our fine culinary arts folks, their opportunity there on the 25th, board meeting on the 4th. Really one of the highlights of the year, particularly for the new board members that haven't been there yet, is the district retirement reception, Aletha South, 3 o'clock on the 10th. It's a wonderful time, and all of you have received your commencement assignments, and seem to be okay with that. And then we have a special board meeting, that's not on here yet, because we just approved it, and then the June board meeting. So I hope you don't have any other plans to do anything else for the next six weeks, because we'll be busy with these things.
Question?
Question, sure.
Under the report for parent-teacher conference, as I reviewed that, I was, we have a very high participation rate at the elementary level, and I know it goes down from there in junior high and senior high, but the numbers look down pretty significantly from where they were in the fall. And I guess I'm asking the question, do we, are we looking into the reasons why? You know, sometimes I wonder if the technology we're using isn't putting some parents at ease, because they're getting that information, and then not showing up at the actual conference, because they don't have any issues to discuss.
We typically see a decrease in the spring, in the February conferences. I also think that you are so accurate, we are providing so much more ongoing information for parents to access, especially with our IG Pro, our Integrated Pro grading program, where you can see weekly, daily, how your student is performing. I actually say, as a student, I'm not sure I'd like to be a student again, because you're a parent, you are very transparent what is happening in school, attendance and everything. So I do think that many parents feel like they have the data and information, and conferences are not as necessary. We're still trying to promote that they are important, and they do provide a face-to-face opportunity that the IG Pro parent access does not provide.
Well, it seems to me we're probably going to need to come up with some new way to evaluate this, and maybe that goes to the parent involvement piece we just talked about, because if we're just solely going to rely on this, and it becomes less and less because there's good communication, we need to come up with a new scorecard of some sort.
Can sometimes be a false information, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Good point, thank you very much. Okay, one item I'd just like to mention before we move to our executive session, which Okay, one item I'd just like to mention before we move to our executive session, which we'll need about 30 minutes for, is this past Tuesday night, Mr. Parker and myself, and Dr. All, and several administrators here, were, were part of a wonderful ceremony where we were able to honor dozens and dozens and dozens of our teachers for the awards they won, Teacher of the Year awards from various entities. Dr. All, what else for some of the awards?
Well, the two ma, there are three major awards given, the Master Teacher of the Year, that goes on for district awards for Emporia, and you, Laney Fasoli, that you heard tonight, was actually one of the state winners of that process, and she was recognized the other night. So, every school nominates a Master Teacher nominee, every school nominates Kansas Teacher of the Year candidate, so some of you attended that banquet this fall, where they do elementary and secondary. And then, the third award given, it's called the Horizon Award, and, and some schools can participate if they have new teachers, but it's an outstanding first-year teacher award. So, we did, we do this annually, it's a great event, they come with their corsages, their schools do a lot of work, they're nominated by their peers, maybe they're building a leadership team, and, and, or maybe there's been a referral some other way.